Okay, nice to see you guys again. I'm here talking online. Like I said, I'm just coming to the campaign event. We had this, I had a campaign event here in Boko where I spoke to the forwards that make up Boko Central. And I had to run back here. All of that in between watching the finals of the World Cup. The latter part of the second half of the extra time which I missed. So I'm happy to be with you guys. I don't know how many people are online, but I hope I have an audience. Glad to be here. You want me to go ahead and answer and tell you about what I am about?
Absolutely.
Okay, so my name is Herman Dua Sehimbe. I am from Conshola government, I'm a government. Absolute chief human being. Lawyer. For the past number of years have been a member of the House of Representatives. Representing Konshisha Van Bekker for their constituency. I'm actually serving my fourth and last term in the House. I was first elected in 2007. And I've done whatever has been possible in my capacity. Power I've been able to wield to bring development to my federal constituency which simply put is called the JHR constituency. I am also candidate for Labour Party in the forthcoming electoral elections. And I thank you for the congratulations, Mr. Pusu. The congratulations that's extended to me. And we are deep into the campaign season. Elections will be something around two months' time. Most of us are traversing the length and breadth of our state to tell our stories and hope for the best. Mine is a new political party, the Labour Party. And being new, our job is made more difficult because we have to go around and sell. I mean firstly introduce the party to people. Then tell people what the party is about. And thereafter campaign, I mean campaign for ourselves. Splay our credentials for them to see so they can make an informed choice at the end of the day. Nigeria has been over the years largely two party state with one or two states breaking away from the pattern. I'm hoping that the next election we will also be able to prepare for that. Of course, I have people to elect credible people as outside of the norm which is either PDP or APC. I have been elected to the House twice on the platform of the PDP. Once on the platform of APC and then this last time on the platform of the all progressive党, which is not a party that is popular here in Benin State. I think that people are drifting gradually away from the idea that they have to put stereotypes. Have more voice to vote for people that they know as opposed to parties. I have, in my time in the National Assembly, brought vast development to my federal constituency. When I came to Konshisha, I've done schools, I've done water provision, I've done healthcare provision, I've done projects, road construction, electricity provision, human capital development. They are providing the basic bottom line things that people need. You guys all know we are from very rural areas. What we do is to try to alleviate that poverty one person at a time. We've provided for women, indigenous women back in the villages, riding machines so they can do small businesses and sustain themselves and their families. We've provided motorcycles for that. And over a thousand, in each case, sewing machines for people who we have trained to do business and sustain themselves. We've trained quite a number of people in trades. Cake making, wedding gown making, fish farming, chicken farming. Thousands of people who we've also provided with tools with which to start and run their trades. This is what we've done. I don't want to go, you're only allowed me fifteen minutes. I don't want to go out there wasting the space that I have. This thing that I show most of you who pay attention to me. I know that no matter what people say about me, end up saying that as far as Tom Mulya, remember it all. I tried my best to find out if I'm a politician. I've not lied to my people once, which is why I have been voted four times in three different political parties, even at this particular time. People are about the first to show that they would vote for you because they know you and not because a godfather brought you. And so I'm running this election on my credentials. Without anybody particularly backing, I have no big backers. I am self-funding. Few of my friends who have the means are supporting me from within and without the country, from within and outside the country. All kinds of things including t-shirts, free scarves, money, you know, and everything that most things that we really need to run a campaign like this. There's no big donor that I have. But we are doing well. Of the three, I'm proud to list Labour Party, Benin State today as one of the three major political parties issue. Three of us major political parties issue. Who will that are running this election. The only party that is visible on the field can pass in for votes today aggressively. From pillar to post, from council ward to the best, is Labour Party. We parade the best candidates in Benin State, in every field. Running against two people basically PDP and APC who cannot compare with me as far as, as you will, the issue of credibility, the issue of capacity. Antecedents is concerned. One is popular only because he's a grandfather, nothing else. And of course, refused to appear on the programme the last night because he has no message. There's nothing until to Mutu. He has no plan. He's been brought by a godfather who is who's talking trade is bringing candidates to be governors so they can share the state's resources with him. And they hope that they can do the same thing again this time around. And the others of the PDP speak of the House of Assembly. I respect that from my constituency to a representative in the National Assembly. But Benin State is in debt today, I understand, at the tune of about 180 billion. And they're still borrowing. I mean, you cannot say that there's any work on the ground that can, that is commensurate to the amount of money that they're borrowing. So I mean, this is what we can borrow and achieve your governor. Those are the things. And as far as antecedents go, Peter Obi is proudly saying, I did this and that and that when I was governor of Anambra State. You can go and verify. Well, I did so, so, and so, and so, all kinds of things as a member of the House of Representatives. You can go and verify. The people running at me, against me, able to also say the same things, are they? Are they able to say the same thing? They are simply running because they have some strong man behind them pushing them forward. Not because they have the capability or capacity to run. I'll tell you one big particular, one or two issues. I'll talk about the flood issue for instance. The last time I was at Mutu, twenty nineteen, I spoke, I was asked to, what was it, was it in Baltimore, Maryland or something? And I was asked to speak on the issue of crisis in Thibon. And I spoke about the flood issue. My speech is still on your website, I see it was in a while. Very clear, my position about the invasion of flood people, invasion by flood people on our land and their desire to take it over. I spoke clearly about it and condemned it whole completely. I have also spoken many times, throughout the National Assembly where I've condemned it. Talk for federal government intervention because we have no capacity, we have no arms to move this water of our lands. That's much different from what the APC's position is. The APC have held, as far as the leader has spoken, that the flood people are not killing us, the Thibon people are killing each other. And the candidate, candidate of the APC has never for one day, even at the height of the killings by flood people, condemned it. And now that his candidate, I'm sure he's aware that if he goes ahead and condemns it, Rafa will not receive me in audience anymore. You know, Bouhar will not be happy with him. So this is for, you don't know who is now in the flood, the flood leader, the flood leader. The agenda is not clear. They're not more likely, the agenda is clear. The agenda is to do away with that open grazing law, which is the only reason why we are surviving here in Benin State. I commend Governor Tom for that, in spite of the fact that we're being located separate political parties, that law is good. People have to graze their animals as it's done in America. And then allow farmers who also make a living from their fields to make a living from that. But then you need, we need to come, the reason, one of the reasons why the APC candidate will not come on air like I am now is that he knows that you may ask him questions concerning these issues like the flood issue. He cannot dare speak about this issue because Rafa will slaughter him, you know, he will be unhappy with me. And if I say slaughter, I'm being a hyperbolic, I must say slaughter, the reason is very good, I'm saying he will kill him, but I'm not trying to do that. The second issue will be the issue of autonomous local governments. Benin State local government monies have become over the years from as far back as I can remember. Or any one of you can remember, for example, have become the Atulaklo Congo for our leaders. They share the local government monies and have collapsed the system as a result of that. The local government system, like you have count local governments in America, are the base bottom line of development. If your local government system, the state government have nothing to do. Mayors in New York, Chicago are very popular because they are the grassroots people who do stuff. I don't know who the hell, sorry, it's further, it's governor of Chicago, I'm a governor of Illinois, but I know the mayor of Chicago. I know him whenever anyone takes over. Because these people at the local level play roles that develop society so much that the state government have nothing to do. In the Nigerian context, our governors have turned that local government system to their cash account. They loot the monies and deprive our people of any form of government whatsoever. Which is why you see that, and then they've held firmly to me that have a firm grip on it and have refused to allow any changes in that direction whatsoever. Four times in the National Assembly have participated in passing laws granting autonomy to local governments in Nigeria. And four times the state government have refused to. In the last, in the last couple of weeks, months, they're about, the Benin State House Assembly participated in denying all that concern amendment. And then the guy who will speak of assembly wants to, the governor, the same Benin State House Assembly is in the process of using the local government allocation to collect another extra two billion. And you know where all those kind of monies end up. You don't find anything to point to to say this is what it is used for. So apparently, if you had any doubt or had any questions as to why they said no to autonomy, this answers it. They refuse autonomy so they can continue to use the local government to take loans and rob our people, blah, blah, blah. So you see, my plan is to grant automatic, immediate, unconditional autonomy to local government on inauguration day. To scrap the local government service commission. I want to allow local governments hire their staff, promote their staff, discipline their staff, and to fire their staff when they choose. I don't want the state government to have a vote to do what they do. Of course, ours will be supervise them and ensure that they make promises that they must keep. I will also cap the criminal enterprise as called joint account. I will not allow it to exist. Of course, once the local government get autonomy, why do you want to have joint account? Joint account is the point where those monies or local governments are located in the name of, if they make it, they have a joint account. Hello, can I continue?
Yes, please continue, sorry.
Yes, yes, go ahead. And how everyone are muted except the candidate, please.
Okay, so that's where we are. We are, that's what, like I said, we grant automatic autonomy to local government and free that tier. Of course, as we speak, they are burdened with loans that the state government has taken in their means. The loans for which they have put it to show. None of those monies that, Konshisha for instance, where I'm from, that the state government has used to take. That none of the monies that, the loans that were taken by the state government, the name of Konshisha, have been used. I think we have somebody from Garagbo or somebody who is. Can I go on?
Please go on, please go on.
So that's it, so we will do that. We also want to pay attention to our educational system, educational system. And we've had a system that was handed over to us by the military in seventy-nine, which has continued to cross the primary education in Benin State.
Call here, share your music, share your laugh.
It's a techno phone, those techno phones are difficult to protect Chinese.
Yeah, I just removed the person, that's too bad.
Exactly. I have a mind of my own. Okay, well, we want to guarantee, want to redevelop. We jig, we replan primary education and then remodel it to fit present realities. It is everyday learning. We have all kinds of graduates who have no jobs, you know. So maybe we should begin to think about, about technical education or vocational training as opposed to formal education that we have to do. Pay attention to the UK where its government wants to encourage people to go to universities. You cure huge debts and then get back doing the same jobs that the, that the everyday jobs that a non-graduate does. Or most of the people who spend all the loans that they spend in America and Europe, still end up doing jobs that undergraduates do. Work in McDonald's, work in the small, the regular places and make the basic income. The thing is, same thing is here, even though in a different way. The only employer of labour in Nigeria, major, major employer of labour in Nigeria is government. And there's a point to which government can test its elasticity. It has to come to a point where we have to create private sector jobs. And the community, maybe I have a sector to apply to, to give the private sector. And the private sector starts from the smallest level of true maker to orange. The ones who can turn regular origin to, into, you know, the small people who do the small things that make society work, like you guys do in the US.
Right, honorable.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, time is up. So, yeah, thank you so much for telling us what your plans are. We're grateful for the time you've taken to go through all of this. We don't have your manifesto, so we thank you that at least you have told us what you have in mind. So we'll be moving to the question, the question and answer session. We'll be asking you questions. And like I said earlier, we just want to, the listeners, to be able to know how you want to be able to do some of these things that you said here that you will be doing for the, for the state. So I have Ms. Miriam Tivzina, which I remember here. She'll be sending some of those questions here where I just want to let you know that this is not personal. She's acting on behalf of Mutu. Ms. Miriam, can you go ahead with the questions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. So, Mr. Himben, we thank you so much for your time and explanations and some of the things that you are doing and planning to do. We're so grateful that you were able to be here. But I'm so happy that you are, you were mentioning something about the IDPs. So if you could remember back in twenty-twenty, Mutu sent a letter to the Federal Government Assembly, you know, petitioning the federal government for the IDPs. And at the time, we're looking for people to help us read that letter. But it seems like it was only one person that came up to help us with the reading of that letter to the assembly. So we are wondering, why did you not, at least at the minimum, support the person that read that letter for us?
Who read the letter?
It was Billa.
Well, and what were you hoping that I should do? The best I can do is to let, let that he read, I'm sure he came under a personal explanation. That's the best personal explanation, I'm not debating. You read them, I was in chambers on the day, he read the letter and that's it, you want to debate this issue. If you wanted to make it a debate, you'd have to come by way of motion. Yes, I was, I had to make it a debate, you have to come by way of motion. Yeah.
Okay, so like I said, well, the reason why I was asking the question was, it was Benin State issue. So you are also from Benin. So we were just surprised that at the time it was only him that came up and was following the issue, that's why I was asking.
Well, the matter, if you, I mean, the matter came up on that personal explanation. There are procedures in the National Assembly. You either call, if you have a letter from Mutu to the House, the letter will be read as an item on that personal explanation, which is not debatable or comments allowed, or you bring that same motion for debate. Now, that motion for debate is a risky process because you may end up not having the letter laid or the front post to be treated. So Billa brought the matter up as a matter of personal explanation. And then obviously, our personal explanations are not debated, which is why you didn't even read the letter. Of course, only one person can read the letter at the time. Of course, and I hold on one second. And good thing that you said Billa did the letter. Billa is a semi-trad candidate for Labour Party in the North East, not West, he's running against one Samuel O'Tom and another title Zam of the Ghost Walker constituency. So it's an opportunity to tell people about whom to vote for Billa too because it's been this good to the committee. Billa is an outspoken member of the National Assembly who's always paid attention to the Thibon issues. And I commend him for that.
Okay, so my next question, or our next question is this. It seems like you are kind of passionate about the IDPs and you are also concerned where we are, you know, Mutu is also concerned about the IDPs. So what are some of the specific plans that you have in mind? If elected, the governor of Benin State, how specifically will you handle the IDP issues?
We have to take the IDPs back home. You see, my, the flood people have arrived Nigeria from all over the world, all over Africa. And they have come here to settle. They are not passing by. They have, we have cried and prayed and petitioned and they are still here. The only way we get flood people out of our land is to remove them in the manner that they kill. We have to separate them. We didn't go to come, we didn't go to something. They want people who has them for a living, they're peace, they're abiding their rights and rules. They didn't go to conquer. I still don't allow them to come and conquer us in state. We have to ask and believe. By what that means. See why Daniel Malu sent this, spoke about Yucco people and said that the Yucco people should also go and find the ways and means. Like the flood people are finding ways and means to get the equipment that they need to come and chase them from their ancestral lands. And then chase them back out. It's my very simple position, nothing else will work. All the petitions that you sent to the National Assembly will not help. They have to go. And I don't want to go and begin to discuss the details of how they will go, but they will go. And we'll never complain about it, we'll not cry anymore, but they will go. They have to go. Except you guys want us to stay, stay and keep crying, we've cried enough. When I get, when I, when I'm elected governor, we will have no further IDP situation in Benin State. Other people can go and be IDPs as well, but people will no longer be IDPs, they'll go back home. Do you know that as a Thibon is standing in those camps, in those cubicles that he stretches over, climbs over on a mango tree and sees flood people living in his house and raising children? How you gonna, how do you live like that? They will go. They will go one way or another, they will go.
Yeah, so, but thank you so much about what I was asking specifically was, as the governor, how do you, how are you going to accomplish that?
There will be, I don't want IDPs in Thibon. I don't want IDPs to live on their land. They'll have to go back home. We would defeat the enemy so that the people go back home. That's my position about that. I'm not discussing IDPs, no. We cannot turn it into a business venture where we keep people and go and get international donations to come and give them, no. They go back home. We organize ourselves so that these people go back home. As a government, they have to go back home. It doesn't be go, it doesn't go beyond that. They go back from one that's superior. No IDPs.
Okay, thanks, sir. So the next question, I have two more questions. The next question is, you've been in the House, House of Assembly for many years. So, and have done quite a bit from what you have listed, you know, quite a bit for the Konshisha local government. So can you be specific, what are some of the bills that you have sponsored or co-sponsored during this, during your term?
Over the government, I'll try. I've sponsored, not co-sponsored, sponsored by myself, the Students Union Amendment, Students Union Control Bill. It says, Control and Regulation Bill, it's a bill that, because I came from the students movement. I was the leader in the National Association of Nigerian Students, when moved into politics. So I sponsored a bill to make a law to regulate student activity in Nigeria. I also sponsored the Use of Siring Bill in Nigeria. I sponsored the, both, I have about ten hundred bills I've sponsored, but I can't get them off the top of my head right now. Quite a number of bills, quite a number of bills. About twenty, twenty-two bills or so.
Okay.
And, yeah, I can, I can upload the bills, my bills to your website. I have a document that chronicles my activities in the National Assembly. As far as bills, specialist sponsor, co-sponsor, and motions that I have, some motions, it's difficult to remember the motions that have moved in the past number of years.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. We're looking forward to seeing that information. So now, one of my last question is, why do you think has been the reason for Benin State backwardness? You know, we've been backward among the thirty-something states, I think we are way at the bottom there. And so what can you change or what will you do to change the status quo if elected governor of Benin State?
The bane of development in Benin State is greed. Greed. The moment one gets into office, he wants to amass all the wealth in the land for himself. He wants to amass all property in the state for himself. Forgetting that at the end of the day, he's going to die and be buried in one small hole. And if you're not even lucky, more if you're not lucky, you die in a plane crash and nobody will even see your body. Greed has been our bane. And that greed is the reason why we have godfathers who have emerged and want to dominate the space. They have been governors or wanting or the other. I want to continue to put people in that office so that they continue to milk the state tribe. There are people in Benin State that don't have a farm, land anywhere. They have no business anywhere. All they know is chopping Benin money, forget my use of language. And they have to put people in power. All they do is try so that they can milk from them. If you remember, when Akumian O'Tom had issues and they split, after, after we voted him in APC in twenty-fifteen, O'Tom said he couldn't work because Akumian was, it was all over him. His feet was on his, how was he all over him? I'm sure he was pressuring him for money and all that. Shortly thereafter, O'Tom filed complaints that Akumian had, I'm reporting the story, that Akumian had stolen two billion naira of the state's money. And that matter, that complaint is still there, unresolved. They become godfathers after their time in office and want to put people in office there. Let me also remind you, when we won elections in twenty fifteen and Buhari became president, Buhari granted states to, uh what do you call it, um bailouts. He has asked state governments to pro- provide, produce their indebtedness, pensions and salaries and all areas. So that would, they would, if the government would give them a loan to clear, single-digit loan, clear those loans and then start from zero. The state government collected that money. At the time, Akumian and Autumn were best of friends. That money was not paid. Did you guys uh ever hear Akumian complain or criticize Autumn for not, for failing to pay that money? I'm sure you didn't. It was because at the time he was, he was at peace with him. If you remember, civil servants in Benue State went to Akumian to complain that they hadn't been paid uh their salaries. And if you go to Facebook, you will see the video of him calling them. He said, we are unable to pay salaries and animals are complaining. There were animals at the time because there was harmony. So the harmony here is about looting our states. Those are the problems. Those people are the problem. They represent nothing that is good for Benue State, particularly the godfather. He wants to keep, keep having people there so he can continue to chop the money. That's all they do. That is all they do. They send their children to go to school abroad on state government funds. Their wives travel abroad and all the types on state government funds. They love the thing. They love it so much that right now, they have come to the point where they, they want their wives to go to National Assembly too and other affinities to go to the National Assembly and become speaker. But we are praying that the people of Benue State are wise now and we're not allowed that to happen. Um but these people, they think that Benue got two vehicle Congo, a particular, you know, they think this state is the act. And if you do away with them, believe me, man. Believe me, my, 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 my brothers and sisters, they don't be liberated. It, I, 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 I put myself forward to lead the change, but it should can't be anybody for those people. They mean evil on Benue State. Look at those phone calls that were left. Look at the content of the discussions. They were all about themselves. Meloni, never was a original soul yet. It was all about, can you make more than one do more? Enough of swam on Yaga. And we, should we continue like that? We represent a complete division from that part, from that part. And we are coming, not because, because we are coming, we are coming with antecedents to show, with records to point to. Those of you who go to Taka, who are from that area, go and check. But when, when they left office, they had this big orange uh juice company that was set up in Taka. There were all kinds of, all kinds of containers lying out there with equipment that were imported from America. Go there and I, I see if you see one container. They cheat themselves to the people too. They have, so that, I don't know who are the containers are. I mean, I can only speculate. They mean, they don't mean well. They don't mean well.
Okay, um.
Let me finish this point. They don't also want to talk about, they don't, they don't want anybody to talk about it. She asked me the question, what I think the problem of Benue State is. I am pointing exactly to the problem.
Yeah, we, we have a timeframe for every question. And uh I thank you very much for, I think you've spoken at length and about that particular question, especially as it borders on a uh as it borders on the development of Benue State. And I hope our listeners are listening, so they will be able to make informed decisions when they go to the polls. And I thank you so much, right, Honorable Henry. Um, Maryam, uh do you still have any question?
Yeah, it's actually one last question. And the question is, so Mister Ham, Ham, Mister Hamber, if elected governor of Benue State, what are some of the uh things that you will tackle in your first one hundred days? What are some of the things that you have on your agenda that you think, you know, you can tackle within one hundred days for our people?
The first one would be stopping the corruption in local government system by granting them autonomy on inauguration day. Total unconditional autonomy as trapping the joint accounts thing, of course, it's a constitutional provision, but we abandon it. And then we're trapping the beautiful, I mean, the beautiful local government, trapping the local service commissioner. Once you do that, you will allow the local government with their issues and under supervised. And then ensure that they do what they are meant to do by allowing the House of Assembly to oversight them as they should. We'll also, in the first hundred days, reorganize and reposition our primary education system. Reorganize and reposition our health, primary healthcare system. Do the same for secondary and tertiary, healthcare and primary, I mean, and uh education system. We will tackle security. We need to remove Fulani from our land in the first. I don't want to, we give it to the, the discussion. They have to go, so we have to remove them as quickly as possible. One month, two months, they will go. We will discuss with them and do business with them, so they will go, so that our people will be at peace. So we, and then we, we, we will, we will focus on opening up rural areas and encouraging private investment. You guys know that private investment that will, will encourage them to come. I'm not beginning to ask them that I must have thirty percent investment in your business for you to work. Allow them to come and set up every couple, couple, let them make business. As far as they employ one or two billion in, 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 uh individuals is fine. We'll also grant uh, yeah. We'll also stop all those incidents of multiple taxation that I encourage my government and minister to do. Do you know that in Benue State, the highest level I've been on the road is what we experience in the entire country? You have checkpoints every, every, every one kilometer of voice collecting money from, from all the trucks. I have uh experience of people who refuse to come to Benue State to supply goods because they say if you don't come to Benue State, they're going to run at every point. I have a boho read.
That you raise, what are his plans? Will he just get to go in the house without plans? You know my now. You should know his story.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Media, for representing us well, putting those questions to the candidates. And the candidates, the candidate responded to them. And if he expanded his, I mean, his explanation, so answers to the questions, and I also want to thank him very much for doing that. And this question is to the candidate. And after this question, we open it up for participants to send in their questions, and we forward those questions to the candidate. So the question is this. And this is to the right honorable. How can you tackle the issue of a bloated payroll in the state? That sucks up state funds leaving nothing to capture development? As the first part of the question. Second part is, can you publicly publish the names of government workers? So as to expose ghost workers in the state? And the third part of that question is, can you clear up unpaid salaries within the first three months of the start of your administration? That is the question.
The first question is to how set the issue of noted over a brutal civil service.
Yes.
What I hear is that once somebody selected as governor, those guys at the bureau and service commission will come to you with, welcome to obviously take this fifty thousand era is our contribution to your celebration dinner. Know that you have a lot of guests at home, so if you take this one now, you will look after them and take care of them. And then you can prepare for the next, and every month, this excellency will be bringing small, small editor. That is the money of the ghost workers. That's one of the ghost worker that I, it has come to pay me with two ways. And if governor accept the money, not doing that, the man has taken more than half of the money. And then that that process continues. It's greed. It's greed. These people are the lost for money they have. I tell you something. Once a candidate from Zone B, who of this political party that affiliated with Mayat Gyalah so much. He, I told he had me make a campaign, a campaign about, I campaigned to people about my determination to to gear around autonomy law governments and, and also stop the corruption that exists in the teachings, teach, I don't know what it is. Prime education system, primary secondary, I don't know that. I'm aware of my person, but yeah, I'm also that, that's what I'm here. And he's wonderful today, and I pray to God he loses that election, he will lose because he's a criminal. You know, and I'm exposing him, I'm also lying, I guess I'll probably lose too. These people are, they are absolutely corrupt. This Zam said that Zam, Zam said simple service have ghost workers. Zam knows that in the same system that he work, there are thousands of people who are there, whose names are there, who are not government workers. And they collect money, they, they collect money in their names. I will publish the name list of those people, the truly, so that we can do verification openly. It's not difficult. They already know who they are. They might probably have some, for instance, ten number of people on their payroll as teachers, of which another five are not teachers, and the governor probably, and I don't recall the the man in charge knows that there are five who are not actually there, and he collects the money every month. So when you see somebody in the bureau announce that you are recruiting two people, and you begin to celebrate, no, it's political election gimmicks. They already had those names, I said, they're just going to fill those ones up and and balance it, I would say that I continue that chopping, there are three, three others whose names are not there. I was in the student union movement before I got there, and I said, our job at the time was to criticize who are criminals or who who don't perform their duties. And I saw, I, I told myself that if I got elected, I would never allow myself to, to get into the point where people criticize me for not doing well. And so our job would be to expose them. So that's what we do. And then the third question was asked to, what was publishing, of course, I said I'll publish it, I'll openly publish. And the, the, the way, the, the, I met some guy who told me that he's old fifty-six months pension areas. Now, when you hear this kind of figures, you begin to wonder how much that those months would be. So if I sit here and tell you that I will clear pension areas of fifty-six months and three months, do I know how much? The only thing I can promise you is that we will not steal the money. Not steal it. Who allow people to use the money for their purposes? We always stop financing people whose wives want to go to Germany, or whose children want to go to Germany for healthcare, or whose children want to go to America for school. Who use the money to develop our schools at home, and use the money to, 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 to build hospitals at home. Also, we save the money, we also not give Godfather any more money to, to go, to go anywhere. And so that, that will save us a lot of money. So I, I think that the bottom line is that you have some people who are honest in office, you can be sure what you get. If I get in office and I do anything outside of what I have done in Russia, people will be surprised. But it don't need for, for a particular, it don't need to follow a particular pattern. If I did it, it becomes strange, is there a question or what I'm doing? You know, so, I mean, we, we all know who are, who we are. There's none of us who's running for office today who, you guys don't know, or the rule of business don't know. You have a clear choice to either go with the normal or you make a change. Trump said when he was running in twenty sixteen, that to the black community was too, and I don't care about your local politics, I just care about the quote. He said, you guys have been voting Republican, Democrat for all your lives, I see where you are. Why don't you try and vote in the Republican this time? What the hell do you have to do? I agree that quote. It simply said, the worst you can get to vote for me is the same thing. It might be different, who knows? You've been voting with these people who, who feel like the state is their, their private business for this number of years, and you've not done, you've done anything with it. Why couldn't you try something else?
Thank you very much, Right Honourable Henry. Just, just one more question that I, I, I will ask before we go to the audience. A lot of times, people come in government, they talk about, we work with you in a diaspora to to develop the state. Sometimes the, I mean, they get the support and everything. You see, the, the mistake people make here, I mean, back home, they say, they think we don't have any votes in the diaspora. But the fact is, as much as we don't have PVCs, we have cycles of influence. There are people, if we tell them to vote one way, then certainly we vote. And here's the question. We sent one of our best here in the United States to, to help bring about development in the last, in this current administration. And he was keyed, like, it's unbelievable how they assassinated him and opted today. We haven't had anything about it. Which is very sad and which is very discouraging for people who have spent time here, have accumulated a lot of experience, and are eager to go home and hear our state to develop. Can you promise Muta, as a candidate, that if you get into office, you will do everything possible, including or up to putting up some money as much as is needed to uncover those who killed one, one of your, one of the Muta members, say who went to him, and I'm talking about Dr. Adur. Can you put up a bounty so that those who killed him will be found?
Well, the killing of Adur was rather unfortunate, he was, he was my brother. It was car like me, it was U R like me. And we had a wonderful relationship, it was unfortunate. It would be nice if we could do something about uncovering people who killed him. So it's sad that nobody has paid attention to it. The diaspora the diaspora have a role to play in Nigerian politics, Benny Partis particularly. The level of your participation is not enough, and I'd encourage you to participate more. I am married to your woman, and I know that people from the south get more involved in how leadership emerges and evolves in the states, which is why it's more, it's a lot easier to find in the southwest, people coming from outside to become members of the House of Representatives, Assembly, governors and all that is, because they, they are hands-on. They don't, they don't just go and sit there and then, and then, and then watch and then hope that miracles will happen, might not come from heaven, they participate. Your participation is minimal, and I encourage you to get more involved. Of course, it would be nice if you get involved with me, but you can't find those candidates that you think are the best suited for the job. If it's me, very good. And then get involved with them, you know, support them and aid them with your efforts, money, or whatever. And then when they win, your, your case is different in the sense that you lived in a developed society. And what you're looking for is not the things that the people back home and therefore look for. The, the people, what you're looking for is development of your communities, you're already settled down. So if you, if you involve, if you get involved in the process and you guide the process at right, we can have a better state. We are behind even Nasarawa. They are building schools that are still building, they're building roads, they're building airports. They're doing all kinds of wonderful things. Let's see where we are. So I think that you can get more involved and participate more. I like to uncover the killings of everybody who has been killed on, on, on lawfully domesticated, including all the thousands of people. The bushes and, and others were killed by people in government or people outside of government. And if I get into office, we also ensure that law and order almost, most of our priority, of course, not mind also the acts that were looking at, have happened in the past, had happened in the past, we'll look into those ones that are available and pay attention to everything, particularly the law hanging fruit.
Okay, thank you very much for, for saying that, because every life is important. I mentioned Dr. Adur, but that was not to say other lives are not important, because every single life is important. And the safety of everyone in the state is important, because without that safety, there's not going to be any development. You can't just have safety. I mean, development without safety, and I thank you for including everyone. So we're going to take a few, about five questions from those who are here with us. And let me say it one more time, that we shouldn't put out, we shouldn't send questions to undermine the integrity of the, of the candidate or to embarrass him. We just want facts so that voters can be able to make informed decisions. So let's be respectful. And do anyone have any question? If you have a question, just tap it there. I will read it to the candidate. Well, it looks like some people may not be inclined to do that. So if you have a question, put up your hand so that you can be unmuted to ask that question. We have a question from Gerard Ego again. Can you unmute him so he can ask his question, please?
Can you hear me? I'd like to say, let everybody ask their questions freely, I'm not embarrassed by anything you can ask on the position, I can't take it. So let him, let him ask the questions he wants to ask, hopefully don't, don't edit.
Can you please unmute Ego so that he can ask his question?
All I can do is to ask him to unmute. He has to unmute himself. Lisa, can you unmute yourself? Okay, good.
Then, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I, I have a series of questions to ask the honourable gentleman.
You have only one question, sir. You can ask only one question.
Okay.
So that another person too will have a chance to ask.
Honourable Henry, you have been representing Benewa in the House of Representatives for quite a while now. And your contribution associated to the development of Benewa State would best be described as abysmal. What made you think that you would be better in handling Benewa State with the type of records you have? You could see where, at one time, you were, it was public, head-on, when the lady, the general lady, I think she's a senator from some other place, accused you of corruption, and you could not answer that, and that is still hanging on your neck. Why wouldn't you develop, help in the development of Benewa State without being elected?
Unmute me. Okay, thank you, my brother George Garden. First of all, you absolutely have no idea what's going on here. Before I was elected to the House of Representatives, the only, I'm from Conshia, so I'll speak about Conshia, I'm going to tell you after. The only electricity pool you could find in Conshia was around the area where it's called the Wajji. Every community in Conshia has electricity, provided by me. I have built schools in every council ward in Conshia. I have built, I have sunk a minimum of one borehole per kindergarten. There are five kinders in, in every council ward in Benewa State, five in every council ward in Benewa State. And you probably don't remember this, but I have a minimum of one borehole per kindergarten. At this point in Conshia, you don't have to check it for both to, that's a hundred meters. You don't have to check a hundred meters to get to a point where you can get water. If you go to my government, I have a minimum of one classroom block per council ward. I have a health center in every council. I have skill acquisition centers, I have computer centers, I have science laboratories, beauty micro, micros, I have bridges. Big bridges, bigger than once, but the state government anywhere, my federal constituency. That is why I've been elected five times, I mean, four times, in three different political parties too. So your idea of a business is easy. I'm sure you guys think when you are in America, to just say, you guys are doing nothing. You have my idea, we're doing the best that we can. We're providing amenities to our people and doing fantastic things here. So don't come and stand and say you guys are doing nothing. To answer the second point that you just raised, which is about aroma, aroma taking. I was probing a corrupt man for looting the Security and Exchange Commission. Was spending a minimum of five hundred, the, the least she spent in a day for food, for breakfast, not, not three days, three meals a day, for one meal. She spent about five hundred thousand for a meal, and I was probing that corrupt man. And she's came planned with all, all kinds of people, including the then Central Bank government, to make allegations against me that I had asked them for bribe. I was cleared by that, by the Court of Appeal, it's clear you have no idea what's going on, you go and look at the internet. I've had my people put it on your website, on your website. I was cleared by the Court of Appeal. The Court of Appeal called what they did to me persecution, not prosecution. So the facts are there. If you would take time outside of being in America to read, you would know these things and not come and grandstand here. Thank you, my elder brother, so I will be come with you. I think what you suffer is a lack of knowledge. I hope I educated you enough. Let us focus on issues I know you understand.
Honourable Henry.
Allow you to ask, ask me another question if you want to.
Honourable Henry, I don't just live in the United States. As a matter of fact, I am more at home than being in America, if you would.
Where are you from? Where are you from in Nigeria? When Teland, where, where are you from?
I'm between Makwe de Boko Geda and Bayongo. So some of this is, some of this.
If you go to Bayongo, you will find, if you go to Bayongo, you'll find my project there now.
No, they're not. That, that is why I specifically ask you. I, I've been to
Any, any, hold on, hold on, so let me tell you something. Any electricity, any electricity, hold on, let me answer the question about you. Any electricity, let me finish you, I'm going to further. Any electricity you people in Bannika enjoy today, I provided it anywhere. The electricity that's, the, 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 the Ojetro House in Bakanga, I provided it. Electricity in Bakanga, I provided it. As Bakanga, that's the, the Ojetro House. Electricity in Mingi, I provided it. Bakoo, electricity in Kotio, I provided it. Electricity in Bannika Township, I provided it. Electricity in, eh, eh, Sambaduku, I provided it. Eh, electricity at General, the Kias House in Bagbara, I provided it. Electricity that's going to be switched on in the next, we'll commission it in the next couple of weeks. In Baagbam, in Angorjo, I provided it. Electricity in Dere, in Ba, in Badede, I provided it. What can you tell me? I have, I have at least a hundred boreholes anywhere when I can overcome, you can't come and tell me anything. Well, speak to us, speak to us.
I'm telling you that you are giving these figures that don't exist, but anyway. What did you do before becoming an elected politician?
I was, I was, I was elected at thirty years. The most I did was, I was a student only there. I held positions in National Assembly and Justice, I came straight from school. And I want to bring you to, up to speed about, about, about how much commendation I've received from Bannika as opposed to what you're seeing. The Teo Kuna, the Nette Kuna, Jack, Jack Wati, at my constituency briefing after my first term, at the end of my first term, spoke publicly, I have the video, saying that he had been alive long enough to see many other representative members, but this was the best. That I had done absolutely well, because I had built, I built a massive bridge in, in, what do you call it, in Bakaa. Then it's called Watcham Bridge. You ask people back on the town, it's bigger than any other bridge in the domestic. I built schools in the Maas village. I brought all kinds of amenities there, gripping bowls and stuff, so you can all you need to do is go back and verify. I've told you the location. I, I, you say I'm calling non-existent for things, but I'm telling you the project and their locations. The electricity in, in Mingi, the transformer is at Bakoo. Any electricity in Mingi, me. Any electricity in Bannika Township, which you must ask to go to Bayongo, me. Any electricity in, eh, in, eh, what do you call it? Eh, Baduku, me. Any electricity in Mingi that goes to take all the Ojetro, all the Ojetro, ask him who brought electricity to his house, he will tell you, he's a sound man, like he's probably listening to us now too. He will tell you that I did it. So speak to facts, don't, it's fantastic, don't do fantastic, because you're probably doing the Kuna agenda of wanting to support your candidate.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supporting somebody like you. That is definite, is, is our question. Yes.
Can you mute Mr. Ego because he has had his time? Do we have another question from another, from another person in the audience? Okay, we have Teyem to learn. Can you unmute Teyem to?
unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you so much for this great opportunity.
Teyem, can you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, and, and introduce yourself, plus where you're coming from, I mean, where are you from?
My name is Trol Teyem, I join from Moscow, Russia, but I'm from Quandi, Quandi in Benewa State. So my question to the Honourable His Excellency is this. I, I'm actually very happy that you won election in three different political parties. I have this challenge with all the elected, most elected governor in Benewa State, because when it comes to appointing either commissioners or people to work with them, most of the time, they, they're less restricted to their political party. But to me, I feel that if you really want to work, you, you can choose people from different political party who you think they are qualified for the job. So how are you now going to promise us now that when you get there, you are not going to just streamline the people whom are going to work with you in just one political party, but you will consider those who are qualified competence and you look for credibility? Thank you.
Thank you. Very good question. And I see you, that's very sound. Imagine that TV, TV, TV Russia. Well, you see, the thing is, I am an absolutely independent-minded politician. I am not the regular kind. The people who work for me in the National Assembly, who are from my federal constituency, are young guys. The youngest of them is just finishing his youth services from Badede in Bannika Law Government. I, I engage young people. It doesn't matter where the party is, but I, of course, you, you want to promote people who help you. You want to promote people who help you, but you also want to pay attention to competence. So I, I lean towards getting fresh talents and getting people who can do the job and, and, and then getting them to do what they need to do to make our state better. And, and, and it doesn't matter to me where they come from, of course, but you know that I would not, not necessarily be moved to wanting to elect people who hate me.
Is that Napa?
Yep, looks like Napa.
So like I said, we, we would like to encourage people who support, who supports you to, to join you in office, people who share the kind of ideals that you, the kind of values that you hold. And as far as they are good, pick them no matter where they come from. The thing they can take to the bank is that there will be no godfather anywhere from anyone of the Henry's government to pick one person or the other, which is what has happened in the state. If you look at that, part of appointments. People usually bring their relatives and stuff like that, so you can guarantee that they are two. In my case, it would be a contract between myself and people of the state, and there will be no death party that will force me to do what I'm wanting to do. That's it.
I, I think Bayo's hand was up first.
Thank you.
Hold on, I can't, I can't hear you now, hold on.
Can you hear me now?
I think that's just starting it out.
Well, if the person, okay, yeah, the candidate is not here yet. But if the person about to ask the question already yet, I have a question here online that came online. I can go ahead and ask the candidate.
The president, we have two hands off.
Candidate is not here yet, so we just wait.
Any? Any?
Uh, can you hear us?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Welcome back, uh, right, honorable. Are you ready to?
Uh, increase the volume here. Hold on, hold on, one more. Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes, brother general.
Good, all right. So Bayo.
Yes. Uh, thank you, uh, honorable, um, it's a pleasure to speak with you. My name is Bayo, Bayo Yo, uh, Rokwikwell. I live in uh Walnut Creek, San Francisco Bay Area in California. My question is, um, how are you going to support people living with disabilities? Um, when I was living in Nigeria and even when I visited, when we go into the bank, uh, even a person with without disability, the the door, you're barely getting into because it just, you have to um, the the security system, it 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 opens, you have to jump into it right quick. And then it scans you, then you have to jump out. You know, you're barely getting in as a person without disability, and then they have no room for people living with disability. There are no ramps. A matter of fact, people living with disability get to be relegated in society, which is a terrible thing. Um, what would you uh do? And and also, I'm sorry, um, I might just beg to um segue into this, like, do you have the ability or capacity to affect the change, or it has to be at a federal level? Um, um, I'm I'm glad, not because of like, I'm happy it's happening, but I'm glad that Nepa took light while you were doing your presentation. Do we have the ability in Benue? Would you have the ability to build a dam? Or this has to be a federal project? And if it is, what are you going to do to be able to um build a dam in River Benue?
Yes, um, first of all, um. Last is from question first. It is on the exclusive legislative list. Uh, the provision of electricity, generation and distribution and distribution, which means only the federal can use. Uh, there is this, I understand that I'm involved in some form of the nation, but it's still a federalment. You see, I I agree, I I I prefer that it was allowed to last this kind of generate distribute and contribute to the national free. We have a mental condition, we stand there kind of one of the top of my head now, I get that. But I think it is, it to be safe, but we have cooling in Benue. We have the river, we can damage that question, I think, and then generate our own electricity. And also, that's the investment to the country that we can do that. But there are so many other things that are invested in the country, including that uh, um, the fuel prices are going to the roof for a country that produces its own, produces its own um petroleum. And we have no, we have, that's a high price, it's very high, affordable prices. Um, and so there's a lot of things that Nigeria has to get right, I think. Uh, if, I don't, I hope you don't mind of any doubt. Uh, I think if we have a president who understands the issues first of all, that we may be taking one of the first steps in the right direction. A country like Nigeria with all of educated people. They're putting a, a country like Nigeria with all of professors, engineers and all that, we end up, always ends up voting people with questionable qualifications. And as as a typical representative who says he has the most advanced certificate course. And then there's Tinebu, whose name we don't know, we're not sure of. It's a bit of bad, we're not sure of his true age, we're not sure of his primary qualification, we don't know if he has or doesn't have his secondary qualification, we don't know if he has or doesn't have, we don't know whether he has a specialty, a specialty qualification whatsoever. We don't even know what his domain is. He says he went to Chicago, Chicago State, he said he didn't go, and so on and so forth. I think we have an opportunity in particular to have a president who will understand the issues and probably do what is needed. And that's as to that. So the issue of people with disabilities, I sympathize with them. Um, there are, there are every society I need to look here, it will be some relationship to look after them, including the government. The fact that they have disabilities in certain areas doesn't mean they cannot contribute meaningfully to uh the development of society. And it should be our duty to integrate them in society. I understand the pressure that we find is going to to ban even for people who are able-bodied. And I think, I think that particularly, I understand how you guys operate in the US, where you have disabled zones, so that they can, maybe to let their lives and maybe it's here, disabled parking, disabled city and all of this, and those things are not done here, where we are, we are still a terrible country and we need to start getting this in right one step at a time. I hope they will get there. If I have, if I am governor, I hope I am governor. I will, I will try to give them as much as I have. I know also include the the very bright ones amongst them, and I don't intend by saying that to discriminate against them. And give them a role to play, not as to, because uh, disability is not the capacity as far as I know, you can invest in. That's it.
Okay, thank you, uh, on a, uh, right, honorable Hembit. Uh, can you unmute the phone for David R. Green from Nigeria? He asks, he's trying to ask a question about uh that is related to the environment. Can you unmute him? Or David, can you unmute your phone and ask your question?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, I actually sent a question in the chat, but I can ask to ask publicly. But right, honorable Hembo, my governor of for twenty twenty-three. By the grace of God, I congratulate you for coming on board to answer questions from your constituents. I remember I was attending a UN function and I I invited a commissioner from Benue State, Commissioner for Environment. Uh, because UN deals with stake actors. We activists can only go and make case for systems we feel concerned about. And I actually invited him and they were to sponsor him. A few weeks to the conference, I asked him if he was still going with me, he said, um, fabulous, you governor gonna have by me. My turn away, they can't believe in her, I know I'm behind you. You know, I was so taken aback. And this is what is hurting the state. The charcoal business is is hurting the state and presents serious challenges to food security in Benue State. Benue is the food basket of the nation. Now we should take environment and climate change issues seriously in the state. I believe that you were in the National Assembly and you are very conversant with the laws, um, especially if I lost generally. So what are you going to do differently? How are you going to assure us that Benue State will retain its pride of uh place as food basket of the nation as far as protecting the environment is concerned? Thank you very much. Honorable Governor.
Um, you see, I am, um, apart from the issues you just raised, I know that somebody was uh committed a great activist. The, you will note that we are about, we are very destructive as as a people in Benue State. If we just cut down trees for the sake of cutting down trees, we burn bush, we burn, we burn our environment up every year to catch rats. I don't think they're going to exist. We also um have imported the worst kinds of hazardous chemicals that we use in in removing grass for for farming. Those chemicals have changed the way every animal that exists in our society, we have completely become a barren people. Yes, having, you go to my village, the place that we used to be heavily forested because you're next to brush it up, yeah, no trees. And so I think that uh we must return to greener ways so that our society can be, can be regenerated. We don't plant trees, we destroy them. Now all the people who are in Thailand buying up our uh our number and destroying our society, and there's no effort to plant. So in the next twenty years, I think we may not get to twenty years, in the next ten years, you will find no trees in Benue. And then this issue of charcoal is a disaster that has happened, it's everywhere you go to. Women are cutting, men are cutting trees and burning, pre-burning them and putting them back to use uh in making charcoal. That's a terrible disaster, that 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 is already happening, happening with us. But in doing that, you don't need to cut the trees. They're cutting with the shrubs, even the small shrub that are just trying to generate. If I am governor, I will bunchy cutting the vegetation for the first four years of my administration. The middle point. Oh, batteries, you know that they go, those irremovable, even who go to our societies and buy a huge massive tree for one thousand five hundred naira. They give the house head, he goes and maybe drinks a go-go with that one thousand five hundred naira, and the man takes a gram of thousands of naira from it. And we get nothing. There's no replanting. The people who come to buy, at least should have the common sense to say, okay, for each one we caught, we'll plant three or four. But our society has been degraded, and we have to stop it. We also have to put a moratorium on on which money so that we can regenerate our natural environment, our natural habitat. Allow for birds, you go to the villages now, where we used to see, but hear birds chirp, sing in the morning to 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 everybody's delight. You don't find any of that anymore. Do you know that, remember that with there, as when I was growing, when I was growing up, we used to have a pooh, vortos in my body. I haven't seen a vorter in twenty years. They've all gone, because the the tall trees that are the usual habitat have been cut down and they've left. You will find squirrels in our, in our, in our society, because the one, the moment they see one, whether it's a, not same mother, they will go after that, killing the children, they who are what you. So we need to do something about it, to our land. You, and you know, when you cut down trees in the manner that we do, you also dry up the land, because trees pour water. They've destroyed bamboo groves, they've destroyed trees. If we, if we allow it, we will get back, look at the baby drying every day. Which is why, because it's now all dried up and filled with sun, once the dam in the Camero is open, there's no space for the river water to lodge in. It begins to go into the city and and destroy people. It is, is our handwork. And we need to, as governments, take fundamental rules to address those issues. And most of those issues are local issues. Um, these are not necessarily federal government issues, they are local, local government issues. Local government issue is issues, issues that can be handled at the state, and with people like you and I, who are knowledgeable about these issues. We can handle them. I don't think my friend, my friend and colleague in the ABC will understand, because this is different from healing than they do in the church. Thank you.
Okay, right, honorable, uh, we have another question from Professor Zuma. Uh, can you please unmute Professor Zuma to ask his question?
Thank you, Mister President. Um, and good evening, uh, honorable Hembo. Uh, I apologize for coming late. It was due to a certain circumstance that I couldn't control, but I was not going to miss this anyhow, so it is better late than never. Yeah, um, my, uh, before I go to my intended question, but but first of all, my name is Joseph Zuma. I am a university professor here at the university, at Schipensburg University in Pennsylvania. Uh, before I. I am from Brooke Local Government.
Okay.
I am, I am Kusum from Brooke. Yes. So before I go to the question that I had on my mind, I just typed in uh in the chat there, a follow-up question based on the answer you were giving regarding the burning of trees and charcoal. Uh, and that was, what would you provide as an alternative to the people? Because they need energy. Now here, in my whole house, everything cooking, we we use electricity and it is twenty-four seven uninterrupted. Now, if it is not electricity, other people are using, other people are using gas. So there has to be an alternative for the people. So, um, the the question I added there as a follow-up is, what would you provide to the people as an alternative? Uh, uh, so, uh, that's one. Uh, the actual question I had in mind was about uh education. And pardon me if you had already uh answered this before I arrived, uh, but um, as someone who has benefited immensely from education, because like most of us, we came from homes, our parents were not educated, my parents never saw the four corners of a classroom. So if it is because of education that I have risen to be a college professor. Uh, uh, but what concerns me when I go home now is the state, particularly of primary education. Uh, you know, this is where the foundation is. And what I hear recently is that they have these arrangements where they are recruiting secondary school dropouts, giving them a serelated training, uh, something they call N C E, not the N C E I used to know back then, but they give them a serelated training. In fact, I even have a cousin who is undergoing uh uh such training. But up to now, if I call him, he will answer hello, hello, you know. And this is, this is, this is, this, this is very sad, because was the basic foundation is missing. It's like beginning a house at the top, you know, at the, at the later level without the foundation. So I get really concerned with uh primary education. So my question is, what do you see as some of the low-hanging fruits in that sector? That if you get the chance, as soon as you step in, you will start tackling, you start plugging those low-hanging uh fruits, so that you impact the system immediately. Thank you again very much for joining our forum.
Thank you. Um, first of all, the alternatives to 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 charcoal and they're not taking the charcoal off of us, uh, 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 for their personal consumption, they're selling, they're selling outside the state. It is not about sustenance, it's about business, and this is disastrous business. They get nothing from it every day. And they need to source other, I mean, alternative ways of making a living outside of the uh uh environmental degrading source, which is that charcoal thing. That is a bad thing. We have, uh, uh, nothing has defrosted our environment as much as this charcoal business is bad. Um, so they 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 can keep, they can afford to use something, do the firewood here and there, but not damage the forest, we can, we have no forest anymore. And to the issue of education, this is, I would, we discussed it earlier, I talked about that in my opener in my box. The, the, there's no education in Benue State. There's no primary education. And without primary education, and like you said, you're building from the middle of it. I have people who are brought from my village to come and give me that picture. The guy you spoke about, and I can say hello, this one's kind of saying, they, they, I I bring them from home in S S three to start school, and I and I want to bring them here so they can just maybe do a year or get a lot, and then go to invest. I've had one, strong-looking hefty guy. I sent him for and they gritted him, I took him from primary school, secondary school, back to primary school. And from class six to class five, to class four, until they move back to the, if I want to, this boy to really go to school, yes, he's, yes, he's sixteen-year-old, eighteen-year-old, I think. See, if I really want to get to go to school, he should start from class one. I imagine a young guy with hair, tall, very, very bushy hair on his legs, going to start in class one, where should become almost stupid. And then you can be sure that those, those kids in there, in there, in there, uh, four-year-olds will be better than he educationally. He ended up beating up everything because of the language, his language. So I had to take him up, I would take, I take him out of school and put him, to put him uh in a trade. He's now learning to be a mechanic. That was the only way you see. He probably had intelligence. He probably would have a boost to that, but there's no background. If you go to my village, or any other village in Benue State, that, I particularly science education is zero. They have no science equipment. They they show their pictures of what test tubes should look like. They show their pictures of what uh boss of the planet should look like. They have never seen them. If if who went to university. If, if, who went to university after living in primary secondary school in Koshishan. Saw a test for the first time when he got to university, I'm watching a party. So they're learning, all of them are very bright, they will learn in a minute. So you go to Benue, primary education school. They take those secondary schools to the, the, the teachers for all the money that they say they pay teachers. You don't find a teacher. The school in my community has no more than two teachers from, uh, paid by the state or local. The rest of them are employed by what you call P T A, Federal Association. And they pay them ten thousand dollars a month, ten thousand, I don't know what the point is in dollars. And those people, you, to qualify, you should have stepped foot in, in secondary school. That's why I'm stepping in, you know, to teach that. This is cool, right, opposite my house in Konya, where I went, I was going across both that, it's not very good to speak on the phone around that. There's one little one outside of the roads. And she was on, at, at the assembly grounds, speaking to them in tea. And I think it was, oh, you, last one day, I don't know, you remember that too. And as, as long as I stayed there. She didn't say another word, because I thought she didn't, she doesn't know, so I was going to speak to her next time, I said, somebody else. She didn't say another word. She stood there, don't follow me, that child on her back, slapped to her back, uh, you know, and then waited on to finish my corner. I was holding this school from, back to, from doing this daily routine on my left. It's how, it's how bad it is. How do I, how do I, how do I, I think we can look at our practical realities. Public education system, the public education has collapsed in the future, not only been. Nobody thinks it's serious anymore. And I think, I think it's the best form of education for America, public education. Primary schools are seen in your country as luxuries. Yeah, but here, public education, like everyone I believe, is probably, is taking it very bad. Because the class are not paying, morale is down. So even when you pay them, they're not motivated to teach. And so they just go and whatever they'll do, if they find an opportunity to do what I said to the children, I give them chair to them. And they will tell them, they tell them, as long as they can, they go and put their food. But, uh, you know, we love the lack of parents and all of that. And so what, what do I do? They're always, they're always, they're always, they're always schools, not the primary education schools that work in Benasti. And those ones that are owned by private individuals. This is for as long as. The only health, primary healthcare system that really does work in the local, localities. Is the one, is the primary healthcare that is run by private individuals. Secondary healthcare, secondary education, the same thing. Health, primary healthcare a little different, primary healthcare to some extent. But you give them an adult today, the major will take that an adult, my wife's sending a private dispatch. You are from a place, you remember this what I'm saying, you know, I get what I'm saying. So we need to come up with how to proceed. Should we keep doing the same thing and expect different results, or should we, should we rejig it? And, and see what we can do with some kind of public-private participation so that it works. Because it's not working at the moment. So we have to, and I'm careful in saying what I'm saying before I'm, I'm disturbed to be, to, to that. My, my, my intention is to spread as wanting to sack people, not as the next thing that people say. He wants to sack people, like, no, that's not my intention. And people need to work it out. There are tons of people whose name are in the local government system, are local staff, who don't go there. Or when they go, they sit on a bunch of these, many of them have degrees. Many of them have the S C's that you know that they have, that you used to know in Nigeria. I can't mean to redeploy them to those schools to walk there, and I have a faucet. You either go and teach, I reclaim you for three months. If you don't want to teach, I will drive you away. And then you, 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 you do the job, and you provide some services to society for all the money you're earning. There are twenty-two, twenty-three of you starting the local government restaurants. Getting a hundred thousand dollars a month as a given example. And the total revenue at the end of that moment is, is fifty thousand dollars a month, as, as a sensible. I would take the, the bulk of them and, and put them in primary schools. And tell me, it's on them in private primary schools too. And so that they can provide education one way or another. And then, and then we can get out of, from this place where we are. It's not working at all, it's not working. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, right, uh, honorable Henry. Uh, we'll be taking the last question from Stanley Asongo. So Stanley, can you unmute your phone and shoot?
Last question.
Yeah, we're finishing at two o'clock.
Two o'clock your time?
Yes. Our time.
It depends on where you are, east coast, west coast, where.
Uh, two o'clock, central, central time. That'll be three o'clock east coast.
That's in five minutes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Stanley.
Okay, my name is Stanley Asongo. I am joining you from Moscow. I'm a doctor student at the High School of Economics, National Research University here in Moscow. I'm from Kwanzaa Local Government. Yeah, I had already typed my question in the, in the chat, but basically it was not seen. Very similar to what, um, Professor Zuma asked. But the candidate, um, good evening, right, honorable Henry. Good evening. Thank you for calling, yeah, awesome. Yeah, my question is slightly connected to what the professor asked, because I am a teacher by profession. I'm mostly doing a PhD in education, so I have taught in Benasti. Well, in the first instance, you spoke about how that you provided education. And in answering to the prop, you in a way contradicted yourself, that that's not the point. The point is about the principle, like, I served in Akwaiwon after my, um, first degree during my, um, N Y S E. Um, and the public education there is working. I happen to be part of the recruitment in Kaduna State. And I understand how their public institution, the, 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 the present governor, I know what he is doing to revive the basic education there. It works on a principle. It, like, apart from Uyu and Eketh, the main cities in Akwaiwon. Private institutions, uh, uh, private secondary schools are not a business you can engage in Akwaiwon. I speak with authority because I've been, I did Nuketan Crannies of Akwaiwon as the coordinator of N C C F, I know what I'm saying. And in the local government I serve, there was no. Can I say, there was no private school you could point at that this is a private school or government school. So I, I just wanted to, this is very key issue. What principle? Because you mentioned basic education, what principle? Because you cannot just say, I would do, everything works by principle. There are principles upon which, yeah, like the law of gravity, everything, you know, like that. What principle are you bringing to basic education? And how sustainable is it going to be? That's the question I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Well, I like, I like that. I don't know, I don't know what part of it, but I'd love you to mention it. My idea of education, especially primary education. Is to bring it in tandem with present reality. We have a lot of people back home who are simply not ready. Not, not ready for society. And I would think that the primary education I want to keep would not be mining the ages of those people. For fifteen years, where you never had any basic, basic education, like, like my cousin was with me now. I provide you primary education that would help you fit into. It's the fact that I think you try to, to move it towards, that teaches you trade, hard work. That can let you, you have capacity to communicate, the basic communication capacity. That's for me is the primary should be our primary drive. If you can make the person self-sustained and, and, and survive. In the Nigerian society, doing what they've learned from you to do. We have thousands, I don't, I don't say, I don't, I don't intend to precise. We have thousands of people reading English language to say. We have thousands of people reading literature and English to be. We have thousands of people reading, creating mass communication and creative arts. And when you come up with those degrees. Can those degrees truly make you self-sufficient? Would you not be more successful if you learn how to manage your rice, meaning outfit and. And then go out, buy the body, mill it to the rice and do business? Or would you not be better off making shoes and selling to people back home, uh, at the time, like, is my dollar? The dollar has shot out of, out the roof. Wouldn't it be better for you to learn, for the decision to be rigid in the manner that it can accommodate our present realities? That's how I see it. And as to, as to the issue of public and private school. Maybe Akwaiwon was doing well, I have not studied there, something about Akwaiwon. But I know that in Benasti, and I'm sure you know that in Benasti, public education has collapsed. Is it possible to make it work again? Yes, I believe it's possible to make it work. But to take people like me and people like you, sitting together, other very smart people, you see how young you are? But you have ideas that, that I probably never, never, not, not thought about. If you come with, to live with those kinds of plans, and we have other people, other clients who can. Come up with creative things that help us make public education attractive again. In Benue, a government vehicle that's given to somebody is used to take to the farm to carry on. And bring home, while the private car backs up home. An official house of government, as a person leaves a house, he loots it all off and destroys it. While his private property survives. Maybe you will need to reorient that people too. And then make the private, but make, make them on a side of the public. Doesn't mean there's anybody who's got, oh, but this is our own, and then we can work together to make it work. As far as it provides with basics that children need, we will do. As far as our healthcare system provides a big business that, uh, people need, we will do. We will not go into fantasy and chase shadows, because Akwaiwon is succeeding. If what Akwaiwon, uh, if Akwaiwon's success is not easily transpired, we will, as we should, as it is today. You best find out our own, whatever, what, what, working with those of you that they ask for, and why the, except of. And other is something from back home too. So that's how I see it. And I can take this to all other sectors too. The civil service in other states works. The civil service in other states works. But the civil service is, the civil service is Benasti, I mean, it's struggling from lack of payment and all that and productivity. You know, you need to, and we need to, we, we need to help rebuild it with experience. Hard and people who know the business, and people who understand civil service, the local government service, and, and, and all of the services. And then, and then, and every day, help in job creation, provide the environment for people to create jobs. And the jobs can only become best created in the rural, rural areas. As far as we make that many, some of the rural areas, people go there. Roads, water, electricity, and then people will stop the drift in over centers and then we can create jobs there. Health centers can be opened by private individuals to augment the federal, uh, state, uh, centers that exist there. Private, private schools are also wrong. I don't think there's anything wrong with private schools, but alongside good government schools, as happens in the United States. I don't think that, uh, everything about education should be handled by the government. Their government are beginning to indoctrinate your students, your, your pupils too. People should have opportunities to open their private institutions around them as well as the government on the side, uh, on the side. So that's, that's how I see it.
Your name is the president.
Yeah, there's just one question that, uh, that came in, um, from someone, uh, here. He said that he was asking that, uh. He's asking about a lawsuit regarding your candidacy, the nature and status thereof. And that's gonna be the last question.
It's still against me, I have two cases, uh, following my nomination. One was instituted by the P D P, and one that, I agree that, uh. At the time, I would argue that I shouldn't have been, uh, given an admission because they thought, they thought I went this. The same case was instituted against Peter, he's also won his own case. The second case against me was instituted by one, uh, engineer Ben Akaka, one of the brothers of Kuna. And his argument, I think, was, I don't think, his argument was he's on section thirty-five of the electoral acts. Which says, and I quote, that anyone who willfully obtains nomination of two political parties. Starts to be disqualified, uh, that's a false code. Means that it means in lay, layman's language, that when you knowingly obtain nomination of P D P. And A P C in the same election, you're disqualified. Or when you knowingly, uh, uh, obtain nomination in J H R F R A C O's constituency. And Kwanzaa F R A C O's at the same time, you are, you stand disqualified. Um, I told you in person to that what he was thinking about was meaningless, because I had not obtained dual admission. I had actually belonged to another party before I came here, just like him, he was in the P D before I came to the party. My membership of another party does not preclude me from getting nomination from that party. I never won, I never won primaries in, in A P C. I only won primaries in, in, in a political party, and my name was voted to end, so I hold only one admission. The court held so, and gave judgment in my favor, so I have no case of this now. Except they choose to go and agree, which is also, not a strange thing I claim. Whenever they can run, I have people taking the courts always as a support, so if they didn't do that now, I feel like there's something wrong.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, with that last question and answer from the candidate. Uh, we have formally come to, uh, the end of this session. And, uh, on behalf of, uh, Muta. And of course, everyone here, uh, we want to thank, uh, right, honorable Henry. Uh, we believe, uh, some people may see this later on. We're streaming it on YouTube. And this will help them make informed decisions about how they are going to vote. And like everyone know. I don't believe, like many, many other people, that there are no political parties, uh, in Nigeria. Uh, the candidate here himself told us he's won elections on three different platforms. Uh, that explains it all. Uh, we need people to vote candidates, not those laters. Vote a candidate that you believe will do something for you, will change your lifestyle. And don't take money from money bags and sell your future and the future of your family and state. So vote wisely. And once again, we'll be having another such event on January eighth. Because the next two weeks are Christmas and New Year. Uh, so we won't be having this event, uh, I mean, these events on those Sundays. And I plead with you to join us again. As we talk to the next candidate, uh, who will be spending the time with us. And one more time, right, honorable Henry, we want to thank you for taking time off your campaign, uh, to be with us. Uh, we wish you success at the polls and, uh. You know, we'll see you often at Muta. Come join us again.
You didn't hold Muta this year. Uh, I went with, I went with one in Minnesota.
Uh, yeah, uh, come, come join us in California next year.
Nice, I'm coming to California, I'd like to go there. Where in California?
Uh, it's gonna be in Ontario.
Ontario, okay.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. And, um, with that, we have formally come to the end of the session. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. I say hello to Kuna, my Kuna brother, I say, I say, I love him.
All right. Okay, I guess I can stop streaming on Facebook now.
Oh, you were streaming live?
Yes, I was.
That's awesome.